We will dispatch with the pledge. Hopefully, everybody's already taken care of that. Moving on, citizen comment period. Do we receive any prior to the meeting, Chris or Ray?
No, we have not. I don't think Chris correct.
Right.
Okay, anybody on this evening's call that has anything to discuss with the commission that isn't on this evening's agenda? Seeing nor hearing none. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I'll move, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments, corrections, or anything from those minutes? Seeing nor hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Planning Commission member updates, anything, anybody has to share with us for the good of the cause? You're all so shy.
I have, I have something if I can bring it up.
Yes, please.
Um, I'm working with someone from the State College Rowing Club who is trying to get a dock put into the Sayers. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, he, he is interested in looking into some grants and I was wondering if any of you have any information on how to help him.
Oh. Can't hear a thing. I can't hear.
Bob, you're having trouble hearing us? Or just Deb?
Maybe because of my phone.
No, I don't think he heard me either, so. Um, don't know.
Can you go over, go over the request again? I got, I got part of the grant and something.
Yeah, um, it's a gentleman that, that's working with me and some others to try to get a dock put into the Sayers Dam.
A dock.
A dock.
Oh, dock.
Yeah, it'll be removable, but it for boats uh that don't have motors, so kayaks, rowing, that sort of thing, and he wants to host big events like races. Um, we are looking into getting money for this. I, I mean, this may not be the appropriate place. I just figured many of you would know of grants that are out there, who to, who to look into for for recreational type things like that. It would really help Howard, I think, to have a big event like that right on the lake here.
Is, is the Seren Palmer under the Corps of Engineers? Are they private?
It's more of a state park, DCNR.
Okay.
Uh, the only, the only one that I probably put you in contact with is the Center Region Parks Agency Director Pam Salakangas.
Okay.
She's been a grant writing guru. Uh, she could point you, probably point you in, in a direction at least.
I knew I, I knew someone would know who to contact, so I'm sorry if that's out of
No, not at all. No, that's, that fits right in. Liz can quote what part of the comprehensive plan that that falls under and uh we'll we'll, we'll, we'll take the opportunity to help anytime we can.
I would think also the State Park people.
Yeah, I think, I think
These, these, whatever.
DCNR.
DCNR Division, State Park Division, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they usually want matching funds or at least twenty percent, so that's what we're looking for right now.
Or Fish and Boat Commission?
Yeah, that might be good too.
Tell people you can fish or a kayak, you may be.
Yeah, and then a, a cup trout unlimited might be a, a resource.
Okay.
Clearwater is, you know, they're good at finding money.
Right.
I'm trying to think, Sierra Club maybe, but um I'd probably go trout unlimited and then the other, but that, that'll keep you busy till next meeting at least, then we'll talk about it again.
Thank you.
Rich, can, can I interject a second?
Yeah, please.
Um, so Deb, two things. I, I believe I talked to the gentleman from the Rowing Club and there are two grant opportunities. One is sailed. Uh, the D, uh, DCNR C two P two program, which is municipally sponsored, it's a municipally sponsored application. Uh, that was due, I believe, on April fourteenth, so that was a fifty fifty recreational grant through the state. The other opportunity I'm seeing that's coming up is through the Department of Coz, or Community Economic Development, and they have a grant called the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program, but again, that is municipally sponsored program that you would have to have Howard Borough or Howard Township or someone with, within municipal government to sponsor that type of grant and limitations on what cost share there is. I don't have all the details in front of me, but I know municipalities are starting to ask for letters of consistency with our community or county and municipal planning uh related documents for these projects, so uh those are two opportunities. Well, even though the DCNR is passed, you might have an opportunity with DCED.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and Pam Salakangas that I gave you just submitted for the April fourteenth one. And then uh to your point, Ray, we, College Township just saw pass through for uh the financing agency for work at the Corning Building.
Okay.
So, yeah, with, definitely tis the season. Okay, any other planning commission member updates? Not seeing none, we'll move on to new business subdivisions and land development.
Great, thank you, Rich. Uh, give me a second while I share my screen. Okay, up on the screen should be an aerial photograph of the uh first of two plans that are being brought before the planning commission tonight. Uh, this is the Philip J. and Kathleen R. Bozak subdivision. This is located along the northern boundary of East Church Street, which is State Route one ninety-two, approximately nine hundred and seventy-five feet east of its intersection with State Route one forty-four, and it's located in Center Hall Borough. The plan preparer is Mies Associates out of Port Matilda. The parent track contains twenty point ninety-seven acres and is owned by Philip and Kathleen Bozak and is further known as Lot Two of the former Breaker subdivision that was previously recorded. The plan that we're going to be discussing tonight represents a final plan submission, and it shows a subdivision of four residential lots with corresponding infrastructure. And as you look at the air, at the aerial photograph, this is State Route one forty-four, and if you're coming from the west or the left, you're coming over Center Hall Mountain, and the first traffic light that you hit is the intersection with one forty-four and East Church Street, which is one ninety-two. And if you take a left or you head east about nine hundred and seventy-five feet, you're going to come up to an existing driveway called Crestwood Drive, and this is the lot that's being subdivided. The plan that Mies Associates prepared is next up on your screen, and again, this shows one ninety-two. And then this way going into the Center Hall Borough and one forty-four. What you see on your screen is Crestwood Drive, and this is going to be improved to a private street, an eighteen-foot wide cartway, and there's going to be the required cul-de-sac turnaround at the end of the private street. And then from this private street, there's a shared private drive that's going to provide service to Lot Two as well as lands of Center Hall Borough. Uh, the property is, it has been approved with sewer. Sewer line easement is coming through the property and it's going to service the lots. And there's public water as well. There's an existing house located in Lot Two A, an existing shop on Lot Two B. Uh, the plan is in pretty good shape as it was, as a, as it was being brought to you today. Uh, we did a pre-submission review, at least I did a pre-submission review with the Henrys twice. Once in October and once in December, just to assist the client as well as Mies Associates in preparing a complete submission. We met with the Planning Commission Subcommittee on March twenty-fifth, and that consisted of Denny, Rich, Bob, and Andrea. The memorandum of understanding was executed by the Board of Commissioners on March twenty-fifth. All the plan graphics have been addressed, so it's a clean plan, except for those that may be required by the Borough Engineer, which is Nittany Engineering. They have public sewer and DEP approved the planning module on January twenty-eighth of this year. Center Hall Potter Sewer Authority provided a letter of intent to provide sewer for this proposal. That was on May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty. Center Hall Borough Water also provided a letter of intent. That was June twelfth, twelfth of last year. PennDOT issued a highway occupancy permit for the access onto State Route one forty-four, and that was issued uh December of twenty twenty. Uh, Designation Officer for Center Hall Borough also issued the approval letter for this proposal. Center Hall Fire Company doesn't have any concerns about this proposal. Uh, I got a letter from them on November twenty-fourth. The Conservation District approved the ENS plans on April the ninth. The, there's a, there's a number of easements and rights of way for this proposal. They have all been found acceptable. We're just waiting for them to get executed so they can, or excuse me, they have been executed. We're just waiting for them to get recorded, so the sources of title can be noted on the plan. The only item that's really pending is uh the approval from Center Hall Borough Engineer. Uh, Nittany Engineering had some comments. They sent them to all parties, which included Mies Associates to address. Uh, Fred Henry, who is the principal for Mies Associates, provided a response to those comments, and that was just last week. We're waiting on the Nittany Engineering to then concur that those comments have been addressed. Uh, once I get that concurrence from the Nittany Engineering at Center Hall Borough, then I can issue the authorization to complete the improvements that are blessed on paper. And then once the once the uh improvements have been glad, have been constructed, we will then get a, we will then ask for a written notification from the developer saying, hey, we've completed all the improvements, and we need to go out and do a final site inspection. So, Nittany Engineering and I will do, will go out there with the plan in hand and take a trip up Crestwood Drive to make sure all the improvements that were blessed on paper have been properly constructed in the field. And if so, then the developer will get us a copy of the, the plan, so we can then secure the approval signatures from the County Planning Commission, and then Center Hall Borough Planning Commission and their council, and then the plan can get recorded. Uh, with that being said, subject to the review comments from the Center Hall Borough Engineer, staff recommends conditional final plan approval subject to the completed items noted, subject to the completion of the items noted above and the approval signatures of the Center Hall Borough Planning Commission and Borough Council.
Great, thank you. Uh, anybody that was on the Subcommittee, anything to share with the other members of the commission?
Just had a quick comment for clarification. The driveway permit is on to Route uh one ninety-two, correct, not one forty-four?
I did say one forty-four. You're right, it is one ninety-two.
Yep. Is, is the home that's on, was it two A, the little, that small green, is that on public shore already?
That has a, an existing sanitary sewer system that they're going to continue to use, but they also planned to tie into the public sewer, and that has been planned for and approved by DEP uh if and when the owner of Lot Two A chooses to tie into the public sewer. Uh, the existing system was found to be functioning properly by the Center Hall Borough Sewage Enforcement Officer.
Make, makes sense to hook onto it as long as you're getting that close anyhow.
Right.
What, what, what does, what does the power line run to get into two A, two D, two C?
There's a, there's a power line that runs, that runs way along Crestwood Drive.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, uh, concerns for staff? If not, I will accept a motion to approve the recommended staff motion included in our packet.
Ask, ask the cat if he wants to make the motion.
He still left out.
Wave at us, Bob. We'll just show him. Raise your hand, Bob. Let's see if he raises the
I'll make a motion.
There it is. Thank you, Bob. Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Andrea. Any further discussion? If not, we will call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two.
Okay, thank you. Whoops. Uh, the next one is also a subdivision plan. And this is the Lewis, lowest, excuse me, Lewis and Naomi Peachy subdivision. And this is located along the northern boundary also of one ninety-two. This one is along Brush Valley Road. It's approximately one mile west of Madisonburg, and it's located uh in both Greg and Miles Township. The plan preparer for the Peachy subdivision is Henry Surveys, and the parent track consists of one hundred and thirty-five point seven one acres and is owned by Louis, Louis and Naomi Peachy. The proposal that we're going to be discussing today represents a final plan submission, and it shows a subdivision of seven residential lots with corresponding infrastructure. Uh, this is a zoomed-in version of the proposal. And there's an existing private street called Log Cabin Drive, and this is the municipal boundary line where Miles is on this side and Greg is, is on that side with existing farm buildings and outbuildings on the property. Uh, this plan is also in good shape. In fact, it's uh one of the cleanest plans that we've had in, in a long time. Uh, I conducted a pre-submission review for the benefit of the client as well as a surveyor back in July twenty-third of last year. Uh, we met with the Planning Commission Subcommittee on March twenty-fifth, and, and that was Denny, Rich, Bob, and Andrea. For me. All the plan graphics have been addressed. This is a very clean plan. Uh, the sewer, oh geez, I'm sorry, let me take you to the plan. I jumped ahead. So this is the subdivision plan that Henry Surveys prepared. Uh, this is Log Cabin Drive. It's a private street with the cul-de-sac turnaround. And it's a, it's existing, and it has a really good eighteen and nineteen-foot wide cartway, and it's fairly flat. And as you can see, the seven lots. Uh, most of the, four of them are about ten acres in size, and then you have Lot Five, which is forty acres, and Lot Seven, which is forty-one. Uh, there's an existing Amish schoolhouse on Lot Number One that has its own separate access and driveway onto one ninety-two. And as you see, and this is the municipal boundary line that a lot of it is located in Miles Township. Now, as I was going down the list of items that have been approved, uh, this is onsite water and onsite sewer. DEP approved the planning module on March eighteenth of this year. PennDOT also issued a highway occupancy on one ninety-two. That was issued in August of last year. The private right-of-way for Log Cabin Drive has been executed and recorded, and that's noted on the plan. I received an email from Eric Miller, who is the Miles Township Fire Company Chief, and he doesn't have any concerns with being able to provide services to this development. Uh, the street name was approved by uh all parties on, on this plan. And the Greg Township Zoning Officer, because Greg Township has zoning and Miles does not, that portion of the proposal in Greg Township has been found acceptable, and Mike Lesniak of the Penns Valley Code Enforcement Agency has signed the plan indicating that it does meet the Greg Township zoning ordinance. Uh, all, all the, the only items that are remaining for approval is the County Planning Commission approval. And so that, like I said, this one is in really good shape, and with that being said, all that remains is for the approval signatures of the Senate County Planning Commission, so staff recommends final plan approval of the above subdivision plan.
Very good. Questions for Chris? As Chris indicates, pretty clean.
Uh, one item, Andrea, during
Had a final plan approval on the first go.
Yeah, yeah, it helps when we do a pre-submission review as well. That really helps out the client and the surveyor. Uh, one item of note that during our Subcommittee, it was brought to the attention that there was a uh forest and wildlife preserve notes on a couple of the lots. That was an error, and this was not subject to any forest or wildlife preserve uses, and so the zone that has since been removed.
Subcommittee works.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, concerns to staff? Seeing nor hearing none, I will accept the motion for final plan approval.
So, sir.
Mr. Haymeister, do I have a second? Please don't be shy.
I'll, I'll second.
Deb, thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nor seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All those opposed, please say no. Hearing nor seeing none, motion carries.
Let me ask, Chris, is that school building on a separate deed or is that part of that one?
That's part of that lot. That will be, that, that's part of that lot.
Okay, good luck, thank you.
As I recall, they have a lease for the
Correct.
So, uh, continuing on, uh, our last action item is a time extension for the University Park Airport. Uh, this is their third. I know Mr. Danicker wants to make this motion.
I will make a motion to get through the extension.
Thank you, Bob. Do I have a second? Again, we have shyness.
I do, I do, to keep, keep, keep going.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haymeister. We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing nor seeing none, call the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, please say no. Hearing nor seeing no negative, motion carries. Uh, looks like we're on to the Subcommittee. Uh, Chris, definitely, we're having one for April twenty-ninth?
We do have one for April twenty-ninth. We have two, again, subdivisions, which we haven't had subdivisions in such a long time. Now we're getting more and more subdivisions. Uh, they're both in Walker Township. Uh, one of those plans is the next phase of Deer Haven subdivision, which is Phase Two B. And another one is a five-lot subdivision on Walizer Dry, Walizer Road. That's on lands of, also owned by S and A Homes. They're not very big subdivisions, but they're not, nonetheless are major subdivisions that will be brought before the committee on, in May.
Deal. All right, you'll
I, I, I will send out uh those plans later this week uh or early next week, and then asking for a few volunteers to participate. It's, it's actually next Thursday is the twenty-ninth. So we'll, next Thursday at four o'clock.
Great. Again, don't be shy. Andrea joined us for the last one, uh, provided good input and valuable questions. Uh, moving on, Center County MPO update, Anne.
Evening, everyone. I'm gonna share my little handout. I just wanted to briefly go over, I, can you see it? I'm always a little unclear on that part.
It's up there, Anne.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're making some progress with the MPO Safety Subcommittee. Uh, we had previously reviewed the top ten intersections. Um, and then we have moved on to uh roadway segments. These are areas that are sections of road that are also seeing a higher than desirable uh crash rate. Um, so now that we kind of have our intersections and roadway segments to work with, we're going to start looking at the primary causes of those crashes to see if we can actually develop a physical safety improvement at one or more of those locations. Um, very preliminarily, what we're finding, um, it is not necessarily the road or the intersection that's the problem, it's the driver. Uh, so we may have to have some discussion about how to uh better inform the public on um driving the county's roadways. Uh, the next item is our uh US Census Notice of Proposed Change of Urbanized Areas. Um, apparently, from time to time, the US Census Bureau uh proposes new rulemaking um around the time that the census is actually taken. And in this instance, they are, are proposing some changes that may change our urbanized area. Um, you can see on the map, there's kind of a dark line, black line. That is the current urbanized area, and we are estimating right now um that the urbanized area, in this case, State College, um may shrink. So I don't really know all of the ramifications of it, because we are, this is kind of a preliminary guess. Um, using the data that we have, they're going to be giving us uh new information based on the twenty twenty census. Um, but from the transportation world, what that will do is uh reclassify certain roads that had been urban to rural, and so the design standards are potentially going to change. And that may or may not be helpful depending upon the location of that roadway uh when improvements, uh when it's time to make improvements. Uh, we don't think we're going to see this uh actual new map, I'll call it, for urbanized areas until sometime at the end of the year. Uh, the next page, I just wanted to kind of share the County Fee for Local Use Program. That's the five-dollar registration fee and show where the money has been going. Um, there have been quite a few projects over the last through roughly three years, and you'll see at the bottom, um, the March twenty twenty-one revised, those two lines. Uh, what we're doing there is swapping out the original funds that were being taken from Act thirteen. Uh, we're using now Fee for Local Use as we get our uh bi-annual distributions with the idea that we can match dollar-for-dollar federal funds to hopefully improve yet another bridge. We'd really like to try to do two bridges um that are in rough shape, but these bridges are um really expensive. So I'm, I'm a bit cautious about whether we will be able to improve two bridges with two million dollars in the county. Um, the last, the Snowshoe Township uh was recently approved uh by the county commissioners for um their project this year as well. Um, everything else above those lines is pretty much uh been uh proved in previous years. So I thought that might be of interest to the commission. Um, any questions?
Questions for Anne? I, I'll just make a comment that the, the five-dollar registration uh item has facilitated some necessary and good uh repairs in our, in the county.
Yeah, I agree. It's been very helpful, um, especially since we've relied on liquid fuels. Um, and those dollars are slowly decreasing. This kind of fills in the gap, if you will, um, to help municipalities get some of these roadway projects completed.
Well, and the way that they've been applied, I think is commendable to the county staff uh as well, so.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else for Anne? Are we gonna let her off easy? Okay, saving it all for Ray.
Thanks, Rich. Uh, just one other item related to Anne's report this morning was a momentous occasion with the commissioners as we're moving forward with our Bridge Bundle As we're moving forward with our bridge bundle projects, uh, which are five bridges that are set to be rehabbed or replaced within. Uh, five municipalities. So Larson Design Group is going to be initiating preliminary design, so. We're very happy to see that move forward as well and Anne's done a tremendous job with coordinating that with Penn Dot, so. Uh, good to see our transportation dollars are being used wisely here in Center County. Just one other item on our visitors this, this evening. Uh, our, our Housing and Community Development Coordinator, Bessie Bart, who replaced Linda Marshall is in attendance this evening. Uh, she has some interest in uh, getting a sense of what the County Planning Commission accomplishes each evening, each month, so. Uh, she's on the line. You can't see her, but um, she's listening in and uh, hopefully getting a lot out of our process here. Uh, for the planning commission. Onto my report, uh, we received some uh, zoning map. Uh, Patent Township had a zoning map amendment for tax parcel eighteen zero zero nine two nineteen. Uh, this is the parcel along North Atherton and Hall Baker Drive. I believe it used to be a Ducati dealership on that parcel. It's one point one acres. Uh, the township is looking at potentially changing the zoning from I one industrial to C one commercial, general commercial. Uh, Nicole Pollack provided us with some of the information to review. And basically we were uh, consistent with their staff's assessment with uh, that proposal being consistent with the Center Region Comprehensive Plan. Uh, Patent Township also supplied us with a uh, subdivision and land development amendment. Where they were going to require under this amendment electronic plant submission. Due to the fact that uh, since staff's working remotely, uh, this would be an easier mechanism to facilitate plan or review. Uh, so that was uh, something that we felt was another consistent amendment uh, for the uh, amendment at hand for the Saldau. Ferguson Township had a zoning ordinance amendment regarding building height incentives. In their Terrace Streetscape District, there is an option for developers to increase building density if they uh. Propose to put structured parking on a, a particular project or workforce housing. Uh, and age restricted units in, within the housing unit. And this one in particular, Ferguson was uh, repealing. Uh, twenty additional feet of building height with the parking accommodation on the same lot. Uh, there are some other incentives within that chapter and felt that, that proposal is at their prerogative since. Uh, they are providing incentives for uh, additional density. Um, I don't have the reasoning as to why they're repealing it, but uh, I have a pretty, pretty good idea that the other incentives. Uh, fit that district and this was maybe overkill uh, for that. We had a few, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, uh, the P A D C and R, uh, Community Conservation Partnership Program is, was open until April fourteenth. The Tri Municipal Park in Center Hall Borough and Greg Township and Potter Township are also partnering in this project. Are planning on putting some improvements and they are uh, in a, I guess cooperation with Brian Almond. Who is a landscape architect out of Lewisburg, PA. And he is helping them with their C two P two grant. Uh, and also, as we mentioned before, the P A D C E D Greenway Trail and Recreation Program Grant. So I've supplied them letters of consistency for both, for that project. It's also approached by Don Holderman, uh, Assistant Belfonte Borough Manager. They are uh, proposing a D C and R C two P two grant for rehabilitation and refurbishment of the suspension bridge over. At Tallyrand over Spring Creek. Uh, this should provide at least fifty years of longevity for that, uh, with their request. And again, provided them with letter of consistency with local and regional planning efforts and also the county greenway plan. Uh, senior planner position, we've advertised that to replace Liz. And we expect to hopefully have interviews by the beginning of May. We are starting to get some applicants in, so we're looking forward to that process in transitioning some of the responsibilities that Liz has had into. Uh, a new senior planner, so uh, more to come on that. Uh, lastly, uh, four of us are going to attend a virtual meeting uh, conducted by Central Section. It's gonna be a virtual workshop on guideposts for decision-making, ethics and land use law. And that's gonna be a morning of May seventh, uh, I believe it's from probably eight thirty to, to twelve thirty. Uh, so we should be able to get some good information out of that workshop. And just a reminder for planning commission members who have not submitted their statement of financial interest. Uh, Natalie Smith in the Commissioner's Office sent a reminder out yesterday. That even though May first is the typical deadline, the Ethics Commission has extended that deadline to June first. Due to COVID and um, submission during this extension will not be subject to compliance proceedings initiated by the commission. So if you can get those in, if anybody needs a copy, I can forward you a copy electronically. Uh, Natalie had sent those again yesterday, so just a reminder, uh, and that's all I have on my report.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I think yesterday Scott Conklin was on Channel Ten. Talking about a grant that was extended to do something on Top Trees Avenue. Like a million and a half dollar grant. You have an idea what, what the, what, what's going on?
I don't have a lot of deep detail on that.
Yeah, I think that is the um, multimodal grant that they had applied for. Um, so each year Penn Dot uh, opens applications for multimodal grants and um. The, I believe the limit is three million dollars of a request, so in this case that met that threshold. And uh, the online application, apparently what they submitted was supported by the, the Penn Dot reviewers.
It apparently has something to do with extending. Top Trees Avenue to, new into a whole new, you all been part of Toffees?
Yes, it's part of the long-term plan for Toff Trees, um, that has been around for, for quite some time.
Many, many years.
Yes, and my understanding is that these uh, I think their turning lanes are needed. Uh, to facilitate the future uh, development.
Thank you, Anne.
It was, it was sort of interesting that Scott Conklin made the announcement, ra- rather than coming out of.
Yeah, that part I don't know.
That really surprises you, Danny?
No, kind of, Rich.
All right. Uh, excellent. Um, anything else for Ray? I'll just share a, a general note that uh, that first item, the Patent Township Zoning Map Amendment. College Township had to review that as well because Patton and College have a. Uh, intermunicipal agreement that shares. Multi-family and industrial. And so that they're playing in the industrial triggered a, a review by the partner, the partner municipality.
Thanks for adding that, Rich. I failed to mention that, but that was in Nicole's uh, report as well, so good, good point.
Yeah, that, that's, those aren't that, that common. And so when, that, that's an interesting one to, to have. How they work and everything. Uh, to our new members, are you familiar with the ethics forms? Deb and Andrea.
This, the filing, the financial filing that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Not, no, this is the first time I've had to fill it out and um, not that I need to fill it out for this, for this year. But for the Patent Township Zoning Hearing Board, I need to fill it out.
Uh, okay. Yeah, you, you wouldn't, for this year, you just started on, this is actually the filing for last year.
Right.
So you, you won't have it, uh, but uh, good exercise to get familiar with it and stay on the right side of the ethics.
For those of us that, that file multiples, you can make copies of it and distribute it. You don't need an original.
Right. Right, and there's usually two lines and at least two lines in the, if you have a couple of hats. Reportable hats, not every position is, not every uh, appointment is a. Uh, reportable, but Planning Commission definitely is, Zoning Hearing Board definitely is, and then elected obviously is. So if you need any help, staff's great about helping with those. Uh, anything else on that? I'm not seeing any on those. Liz is big shoes to fill. Hopefully, you know, we can get somebody new from outside of the region versus playing musical card, musical chairs. Everything like that, but we'll take whatever's the best available. Unless it's from College Township, you're not allowed to have anything. Okay, anything else? We didn't quite make six thirty, Deb, but we made six forty, so. Uh, well, she already stepped off, so she got out. We got our votes. Unless there's anything else for the, to, to the cause, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Got it.
Benny has made it. I will second it. We are adjourned. See you next month.
Thank you, everyone.
Good day, folks. Bye-bye.